Okay, I'd like to call the town council regular meeting on April third to order. Roll call please.
Councillor Stone.
Present.
Councillor Mellon.
Present.
Councillor Tulowitzki. Councillor Kulturites.
Present.
Councillor Gardner.
Present. If we could all rise for a moment of silence and then pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in this soul of the Constitution.
Okay, then we move into the public comment section of the meeting. We kindly add that all in-person public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes per group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to and related to public policy issues. In the event that questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes and refer to the questions to the appropriate department or staff to follow and respond. Public comment may also be submitted electronically. If you have any questions or comments about items on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comment to town manager Dustin Anderson at D Anderson at Munster dot org. Is there anyone here that would like to speak during the public comment section of the meeting? If so, please come up to the podium and then we ask you to state your name and address and then you can speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, we put the podium over there, please.
So thanks for this opportunity. My name is Sharon Grady and I live at seventy-nine thirty-one Monroe Avenue. So I'm at the corner of Monroe and School Street. So I'm here tonight just to let everyone be aware of what has gotten to be a bit of a safety issue in the area around E's school. So School Street, which goes east and west from Jefferson to Jackson, it's getting as big as you know, busy, not just with kids going to school back and forth, but also with an increase in traffic. There are no stop signs except right in front of E's. And it's getting really fast. And if you kind of stand out there for these kids, there needs to be some additional, I think, just looking into to make sure that area is safe for the kids. Again, just referring to the area around E's. River Drive from Calumet. If you take River all the way around and get up to Frederick, there is not one stop sign from Calumet to Broadmore. And I take that route frequently because I'm not walking my dog, riding bikes, and that is really fast. There is one, I think it says like twenty-five miles an hour. Then I think there's one on Frederick that says the same thing, but I don't think it's deterring the speed of the drivers. So I just wanted to address that. I think that, you know, again, this is for, we don't want to have something happen to the kids that are, you know, walking along there, crossing the street. Yes, there is a crossing yard at school in Jackson, but there's even a stop sign all the way down Jackson or all the way down Harrison, anywhere near that school. And now with sports and soccer starting in that back playground area, I just think that it would behoove us to really make sure that this area is looked at and identify if in fact we need to have anything else put in there to support kind of this slowing down. So that's about all I have to say. I know there's some other people here that might want to say something else, but I appreciate your time. Again, I, I just think it would help everybody. So thank you.
Ms. Grady, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the lectern?
I'd just like to reiterate what she said. Bill Schmelde, seventy-nine twenty-two Madison. Dustin and I have bet three times on this matter. You recall Dustin?
Yes.
Thank you. And we did nothing for pre- business. Maybe we could do something today. It is a matter of safety. I know you said you can't just do it. But sure you can. And you can't just do it. Let's try to do something.
I think the issue we met on was different, to be fair, but you're right. So we have a process for this. We will look into it. And like many other places in town, we will add if traffic calming infrastructure like we have on Treadway, like we will be doing on White Oak and on Forest. First, we take a.
I could just ask, just your, 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 your name again, sir.
Well, William Schmelde. Seventy-nine twenty-two Madison. I just don't feel too good today. So I'm wanting to go to.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine. We just understand. But is there anything else that you'd like to mention?
Yes. Is it true that it took seven years to get things instituted like this in the Beach Park area? You were investigating it at that time and it took seven years to implement. Is it true that one councilman, if I'm correct, had speed bumps put in their alley and didn't do it in the street?
Those are questions that we would have to review and.
You will concur with that though.
I do not, I, I'm not aware of the situation.
That is.
Again, okay. We will review that situation, but it's something that we would have to take a look at into some of the notes.
I know Carlo and Charo Bell put in speed bumps and I go that area frequently. It helped.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I hope we, you know, I'm not here to argue with you either, but if I had kids, I do not. I live on the corner of Madison and School and I'm outside a lot doing yard work or something. It's dangerous. And if I had kids or grandkids, I wish I did. I do not. I would not live there.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your help. Hopefully get some consideration.
Yes. Another gentleman's coming to the lectern.
I'm George Buzzett, eighty-one forty-four Jefferson. So I just live a few blocks south of these people. Traffic is bad. They speak in my neighborhood too. I'm at the corner of Jefferson and Thirtieth. In addition to the traffic and people ignoring the signs, we have semis going through our neighborhood. One time last summer, there was a, like a Greyhound type tour bus parked on the corner of, south of me on Jefferson. You know, it's funny because you get up to Ridge Road if you want to turn right off of, you know, Calumet and get the Ridge Road and turn right. There's a sign that says no semis on Ridge Road. And that spread is a whole lot bigger than our neighborhood spreads. So you're talking about safety. Semis and big trucks have no reason to be in those, in our neighborhood here.
We know that you, everybody uses alternate routes from Ridge and Broadmore. And they'll come down our street because it's an open run from Jackson, as Ms. Grady, Mrs. Grady said, from Jackson to Jefferson as a bypass. And of course, the expressway is a noise issue. And is it, can we get some noise blockers put in there in that area? Or is it true that some commercial interest prohibited those from being in at a certain time?
I, we don't, I, we would have to review that also, sir. That, that.
Get back with me.
Yes, certainly we will. We have. And again, certainly somebody from the council will get back to you. Very good.
The other thing I'd like to add about the semis and big trucks is in our corner right there, we've had three water main breaks in the last several months. The last one, man, placed right there on, on the spot. The water's coming up two, three different areas. Bar truck came, water department came and fixed it right away. But I think these semis are hitting the, damaging the subsurface of the road. You know, it's been a mild winter. So we didn't have that big freeze. And that, that heavy traffic is not good on our infrastructure.
Certainly understand, sir. Thank you very much for your comments. Is there one, anyone else here that would like to speak to the council?
So I'm Jim Grady. I'm sure it's hosted. She brought up a lot of good points about what we need to do to slow down the speeders. But one thing I want to emphasize to you all is off of Calumet Avenue of River, we really need to consider closing that off. We have a lot of people that come off of Calumet Avenue on the interstate to avoid the traffic on Calumet. They come down River Road speeding like bats out of hell. And it's obvious and a lot of the planes that I see are Illinois planes. So these are folks that don't even live in our city, let alone our community. But yet they use River Road as their exit to go into Lansing, I'm assuming. But they're speeding through there. I walk my dog at least twice a day down River Road. And it just amazes me the number of Illinois place of people that are speeding down that street. So the point is, is I really think that the town should consider closing that street off or making, you know, one-way streets going eastbound.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Grady.
You can do it.
Any other comments, people that would like to speak to the council at tonight's meeting? Seeing none, we will move on to the agenda, into the consent agenda. President, I move we accept the consent agenda. Second. There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
Pardon me, that was all in the previous topic.
We've got to go on.
Pardon me?
We've got to continue.
I understand. Didn't you bring time? We hope you have considered.
Happy Easter.
What's the resident? We care.
Very good. There is a motion, a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. First item under the. There is no old business. The first item under the agenda or under the new business is ordinance eighteen ninety-eight, which is the additional appropriation. For treasure, miss anything to add to your memo?
Just to reiterate what the memo says, this is the first step in the additional appropriations process. This is something we expected after we received the budget notice in December of twenty-two from the Department of Local Government Finance. This is also in response to the comprehensive financial plan. And so we're asking for an additional, we, we reviewed all the property tax supported funds, but we're looking for an additional appropriation for the general fund of seven hundred thousand dollars. And we've got the cash to support it. Our next meeting will hold a public hearing and then we'll ask for adoption of the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. There is a recommended, recommended action in front of the council.
I move that we hear ordinance eighteen ninety-eight for additional appropriations on first reading today. Schedule that public hearing and second reading for April seventeenth. Two thousand twenty-three.
There's a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Any comments or discussion?
Councillor Tulowitzki, did you second? Okay.
Yes, Councillor Tulowitzki.
Are you able to share at a high level where this, where, what the impact of the seven hundred thousand additional funds will be where? You said we have the cash. Where is it coming from?
It's cash that's already in our bank. It's already there, but when they, when we submitted the budget in last year, we went deliberately high. And when they came back, they said, you're going to need to cut, which we expected, cut it from the general fund. It's, it's the number that we asked for. It doesn't mean that we can't support it. So now we're just asking for the permission to spend that money. And it goes toward personnel payroll expenses.
And in this year's budget, we're going to.
Yes.
To give you a different approach according to the comprehensive financial plan.
Absolutely. Learn things from the comprehensive financial plan that we're going to do a little differently in the next twenty twenty-four budget planning process.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Item B, this is a horticultural proposal regarding pollinator gardens. Deputy Town Manager Dean Damas, you wrote the memo. Anything to add or?
Um. No, I wrote it for Dustin, but um. We just, we're, we're establishing these butterfly pollinator gardens around town and we want to teach our maintenance personnel how to take care of them and possibly plant additional ones. So this, this woman will be able to help us to train them to do so.
Very good. So this goes hand in hand with the efforts of the Munster Civic Foundation. Couple benefits of this is supportive of that civic foundation endeavor, which is a beautification. But it also allows the town staff who is, who are skilled and able to, rather than mow grass, those people are really good at their jobs and they can do a lot of good work for the town. So for every hour they're not on a mower, they're spending an hour filling potholes, collecting branches, taking care of trees, doing other things. So there's a strategic advantage also of taking some, not all, but some portions of manicured grass that people don't see normally that we just mow out of force of habit and turning those into productive ecological hotspots for pollinators.
Thank you very much. There is a recommendation in front of the council.
Mister President, I move to authorize the town manager to engage Dolly Foster to provide three sixty-minute lunch and learning sessions to maintain staff over the next several months that he costs six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second. Any of the comments or questions?
I think some of the things we get to do are good culturally. I mean, this is obviously a small amount of money for this training, but to become a monarch city, to pass out the seeds to residents and to dedicate some land where this sort of ecological reason makes sense. And I also appreciate Mister Anderson's comments about those labor, much more importantly, the labor that we save for public works. All things butterflies.
Very good.
I have a question. Would any of these sessions be open to the public? People who are interested in having pollinator or butterfly herds on their own property?
You know, we didn't talk about that when we talked, when we had this conversation, but I don't see why that would not be okay to do. I mean, I, I would think that would be a perfectly fine thing.
Very good.
I planted seeds in the fall and I realized this spring, I don't know what the seedlings look like. I don't know.
You should probably come. You should probably come.
They look like weeds.
It is milkweed.
Milkweed, of course. I think it's a good idea to.
Yeah, very good. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yeah.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. We'll be into the next item on, on the agenda, letter C, the opioid settlement spending. There is a memo from the town manager and there's also a memo from Officer Jim, James Bryce in the police department. I think both memos are relatively self-explanatory. Dustin, would you like to add anything to yours?
No, thank you, sir.
And Chief is here. I don't, it, it.
Right, we, we were just looking for a little relief. Officer Bryce works really hard with PTOs in that. He's just looking for a little breathing room. The six thousand of that opioid funding would leave a lot left in the bank. It just would help us tremendously to, instead of fundraising all the time, to actually provide more materials for there.
Very good. Thank you. There is a motion or a recommendation in front of the council.
I move we approve providing six thousand dollars annually of the opioid, opioid settlement funding to Munster their program during the seventeen year funds distribution period.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I'm not a loser yet.
Again, I do, I do think that this is an important program and I read in Officer Bryce's memo that there are some other thing that he would like to have done in previous years and this funding will enable him to expand that program. I am sensitive to the fact that this settlement comes from a large settlement specific to the opioid problem. Reading through the memo, I think it will work to address that problem in part. And there will still, of course, be money left over from what comes in each year. So I hope as we look to appropriate the rest of the money that it's like this program, something new, not just replacing something that we already do to make best, best use of, of the funds that come from the settlement.
Yes.
Officer, Officer Bryce had asked for this previously and then he had been challenged to find new programs that met the opioid. And we had a conversation, we had a small meeting about it. And as we're sitting there, he's shaking his head, shaking his head. And he's like, well, I really wish I had enough money to expand to the high school. And we're like, aha, that's what we were looking for. That's what we're looking for. He wanted to bring some speakers in. We won't, you don't always know who's touring, who's out and about. So this gives him the opportunity to bring them in primarily at the high school. So we're excited. We think that this does meet the criteria that we're challenged with to take it to that next level. And thankfully, there's plenty of funds remaining and there's more funds coming in. So we'll know more in May, what the next settlement dollar amount will be. Possibly, let's qualify that, possibly as early as May with the next settlement tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, for my responses, I, I also serve on the, on the board of a nonprofit called G U in Gary, Indiana. And we recently ran a possibility summit for high school kids. There were four or so high schools that came into I U N and there were a number of speakers who came to speak who had been successful coming from that community. And I, I really like the idea of bringing in speakers to make a big impact on high school students as, as these were. Yeah, that, that's something different than what your teacher or the people you see every day or your parents say. So I think that's a great news.
Exactly. And I think, again, the staff and all the department heads can still use some of the additional monies if they see some other programs. And this also allows Officer Bryce to really get back into a programming and finding new programs then rather than being a chief fundraiser for the, for the department. So, or for the program. So any other comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the two thousand twenty-three National Night Out Lock Party Request. There is a memo also from Officer Bryce. In addition to the off, the memo, I would call your attention to a resolution that's in front of you, Resolution twenty-one oh nine, which is very similar to last year's resolution. And the resolution is really for the waiver of fees for the two thousand twenty-three National Night Out events. So I would ask you, as you consider this memo, to consider passing Resolution twenty-one oh nine, which is the resolution for the waiver of fees for the two thousand twenty-three National Night Out event. And this is quite frankly, the same memo as last year. But the only addition, but the only changes is the dates are changed.
Mister President, I move that we adopt Resolution number twenty-one oh nine.
I second it. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion, please?
Just only to say that we have a fabulous night out every August. Last year was particularly special with a number of block parties that were all focused towards National Night Out throughout the town. It made people proud to live in Munster and I look forward to doing this again.
Thank you. Very good.
I concur. I think this is great. Like whatever we can do to also promote that resolution is there and have some healthy competition within neighborhoods. I understand there's a sign that gets put up or somehow the best rated and say there's a block party. And we might have extra butterflies to, you know, enjoy.
I think your block better watch out because you're going to do better job than this year.
Very good. There is a recommendation or, there is a motion and a second for Resolution twenty-one oh nine. Roll call please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter E, the contract award for the West Forty-Fifth Street paving project. Deputy Town Manager, anything to add to this?
No.
There is a memo that was in the board packet with a recommendation at the bottom.
Move we award milestone contractor North Incorporated the contract for the two thousand twenty-three West Forty-Fifth Street repaving project at their bid price of seven hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Yes, absolutely.
I would just like to say that we've been working on this for a little bit. I'm so glad to see it that we have a contract that we have one to put in place now because I, I just got a call again last night from a resident saying they, they can't even drive down. They said, I know you have a Jeep, so you can probably manage it. You know, but my car is low and I've already spent fifteen hundred dollars replacing cracked rims and different things. And so, and I say, yes, I do have a Jeep, but it's extremely bumpy and, and we have been looking at that. So I'm glad I see that. And I, my question would be, when do we think that we'll mobilize for this? Are we, I know if we vote to approve this contract tonight, do you know what the?
It'll take the contractor a couple of weeks to get bonds in place. And then that's when we sign the contract and then it all depends on their schedule. I'll also say that we are trying to coordinate with Nick D because Nick D will be working in the area later this year. They have some utility relocation to do as well as building some supports for the flyover over Forty-Fifth. And we really don't want to pave that section of road only to have them rip into it again. I'm trying to get them to give me an exclusion on that area where we would pave up to their work area and they would pave the rest of it done. But I'm still working on that.
Because we don't know, they could be, we don't know where they are in the, I mean, I know there's a timeline, but.
They've been waiting for an agreement with the CSX railroad company in order to do work in their right of way. And it's been over a year. So I'm not, they think they're going to be there this summer, but I'm not encouraged that that will happen because they've already been waiting for so long.
We have seen how slow.
Yes, it's railroad time.
Unfortunately, well, if we can, I would hate to see another year ago. I don't know that we could manage.
It will, yes, it will be paved. It's just a question of whether that section right around the railroad tracks gets paved now or later. So it might be bad right around there until we, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Mister President, yes. Just following up on, on that, I know our engineer's estimate was almost two hundred thousand higher. So presumably we were budgeting for the one million or so. That might give us flexibility to pave it and have it repaved later on. I mean, I guess I heard what you said that we're going to move forward anyways. We're not going to wait for Nick D or railroad approvals, but just noting that there seems like some financial flexibility to get it done, even if they're not corporate. Does that make sense? I understand what you're saying.
And if I may be back on that, if, if that were not to be the best use of it or if it wasn't, it was going to be possible since there is that difference that we budgeted for. Also had a lot of calls about the other Forty-Fifth, you know, Forty-Fifth from the underpass to Highland, which is extremely bad. So.
Further, further down.
Well, you said I missed.
That's later on the issue. That's later on the.
Sorry, I, you're sleeping. You know what? I sold your.
Any other comments regarding the Forty-Fifth, West Forty-Fifth Street paving project and the motion has been motioned and seconded?
Mister President, I just wanted, do we have experience with millstone contractors?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, if that worked, all right.
I said, that's the former Reeve Riley.
Washington County.
I know. And.
They are, they are, they just finished a paving job and they're doing another one. We'll be starting in the next.
I think I mispronounced Miles.
Yes.
Very good. Anything else? Motion, a second. Now let's, roll call please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. And we move along to the V M C proposal for engineering services associated with the Ridge Road Water Tower Reconditioning Project. Deputy Town Manager, anything to add?
No.
There is a recommendation in front of the council.
Mister President, I would move to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with V M C L L C to provide engineering services for telecom coordination associated with Ridge Road Water Tower Reconditioning Project in the amount of six thousand five hundred smackers. Dollars.
Very good. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Stone.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Okay. Item G, proposal for geotechnical services for East Forty-Fifth Street and the Midwest Industrial Park roadway. Deputy Town Manager, can you explain what the engineering? Um, Deputy Town Manager, can you explain what the engineering services would be for?
Um, so before we decide how to repair roads that are in need of paving. It's a good idea to figure out what what's going on underneath the surface of the asphalt. So this proposal, um, AES would um, do eight soil borings. Where they go down ten feet into the ground and then analyze the core that comes back up. It'll tell us the thickness of the asphalt, it'll tell us the thickness of the gravel underneath. Then a half inches in order to get a really, really good product. So when we repave West Forty-Fifth, it's gonna be good for fifteen, twenty years. We want to do the same thing here so that we can make a good educated decision about how best to repair the road. And then once we get the data, we can go out for bid and get these roads paved as well.
And once you, once you get the data, then that, then you're able to prepare your budget estimate for the project.
Yes, and the bidding documents and all that stuff.
Very good. There is a recommendation in front of the council.
I move we authorize the town manager to accept the advanced engineering service proposal for the geotechnical engineering service in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
There goes a motion.
I'll second.
In a second, uh, any discussion?
I just wanna thank them for going out and uh, taking care of this so quickly, so I appreciate it. Just makes sense to take care of all of it. So, thank you.
Get more complaints about Forty-Fifth than any other street in town.
If I could just ask, the timeline from the the technical services and the and the data that you're collecting from this to actually going out to bid. What, what is potentially the timeline for that?
It could take a couple of months, um, once we give the go-ahead to AES. It'll might take them a week or two to get mobilized and then it takes them another week or so to analyze the data. And then bidding by law takes at least three weeks.
Okay. So again, this, this, yeah.
But this could be done in the late summer, early fall. I would imagine we could get it done um, this, this construction season before the plants close.
Possibility, yes, okay, very good, thank you.
Timeline in part having anything to do with this work being born. I guess it does.
That can, that can end with the discussing, uh, is there any other discussion regarding the geotechnical uh, services? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Soon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Counselor Culturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to uh, letter H, the C D M Smith Amendment three. Yeah, Deputy Town Manager, anything to add to this memo?
I don't, but perhaps.
Uh, this, like previous updates to the C D M Smith Agreement is a no-cost update. Uh, it does not adjust the uh, amount to exceed. It does adjust the hourly rates that the engineers and design professionals charge. But it will not affect the total amount uh, that the town would pay. And it also uh, amends the contract length to the end of this year.
Very good, there's a recommendation in front of the council.
Mister President, I move to authorize the town manager to execute Amendment Three of the Agreement between C D M Smith and the town.
I'll second. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Soon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Counselor Culturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
I wanna thank you and I know staff wants to thank you for this and the V M C. There are some things out here this evening that you've authorized that just provide us with the bandwidth. That just does not exist in a small town, so C D M Smith, we can send something to them, to their Chicago office. They have people who've worked for Metro, they've, and the M T A and huge clients. And they can look at these huge plans that NICD set gives to us, hoping that we don't look at it, because we're just little old Munster. Banking on that we don't look at it, and then we can provide substantive technical feedback and pushback to make sure that. The outcomes that the town wants to see actually happen and we don't get rolled over. So it's a, it's a huge benefit to the town, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and good comments. Uh, we move into letter I, the C C M G twenty oh two. Dash oh two, no-cost contract.
This again is uh, an amendment, uh, in dot provides the town designation numbers. They gave us one, they realized that's not the one they want to give us, so they have to give us a different one, which requires an amendment to the agreement. All contracts must come before the council, so here it is. Would you please allow them to change the desk number?
Very good.
Mister President, I move that we approve Amendment One to Contract Six Nine. Six three eight, Indiana Department of Transportation to facilitate the assignment of our new D E S number.
Second, motion a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Soon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Counselor Culturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Last on item under new business is letter J, this is the NICD invoice thirty-nine sixty-nine. Yeah, Deputy Town Manager, anything to add to the, the memo or the supporting documentation?
No.
There is a recommendation in front of the council.
Move we authorize payment of invoice number thirty-nine sixty-nine to NICD in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. From the fifth allocated fund.
I'll second that. Motion a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Soon.
I.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowinski.
Yes.
Counselor Culturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Very good. Uh, I have a question there. Uh, I, well, under four reports, or you have something to go back to? Yes.
Doctor Polprades. Where are we with the traffic study on the Calumet Avenue?
We have worked on a bid document to contractors to begin, because it has to be bid out. That's a cost-benefit analysis, so we have to issue that R F P, we're working on that R F P.
You're writing that R F P right now?
It is in process.
Very good, reports, any reports to come before the council? Yes. Yeah, good.
Okay.
Portfolio reports are reports, call me, thank you.
Okay, all right, um, as the liaison to the school board, I just wanted to um, announce. I'm, those people, I'm sure that you're aware, but the school board, um, the. Early voting starts tomorrow and there is a referendum that the school board has put on the um, a ballot. And it is um, it is to support um, our schools and keep them at the level that we've, you know, that we've always enjoyed. To keep the staffing, uh, this is a operational funds, I believe this is not for capital, correct? And it's going to roll off um, the one that that was approved prior. Will in, in this would replace it, so it'd be no change in um, tax taxes, uh, from what I understand. So if you have any other, if you have any questions, I encourage you to reach out to our school board. There have been a couple of articles in the paper, um, but just wanted to make everybody aware that that is on the ballot and obviously very important to our schools.
Very good, thank you. Yes.
May I make a comment slash question in relation to this? Uh, school referendum? Um, often, we've spent some TIF funds tonight, often there's talk about tax increment financing and um. And my understanding, and maybe someone can correct this, or this is not the right time, Nikki, in a future meeting, we're gonna address. Um, tax increment financing is a tool available to the town to promote economic development. And sometimes there are misconceptions about how it works. Any development that happens that is subject to a TIF does still pay referendum money. So if we have a development that creates a lot of incremental value in our town. Some of that value might be set aside for the developer or to fund infrastructure needed to support that. But when a referendum is passed for the town, all of that incremental value is subject to the referendum. And that's real money going to us, to support us. I know that's sometimes a misconception, I'm not sure if I have that.
That's accurate.
Correct, very good, thank you, thank you. Uh, other uh, items under reports or portfolio reports? Okay, good, I did uh, did step on, for treasures chosen, very good, seeing none. Uh, announcements that all town council meetings will begin at seven P M unless otherwise noted. And our next town council meeting will be April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, seeing no other business?
Mister President, I move we adjourn.
Motion a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? If that meeting is adjourned, then we'll move into the Redevelopment Commission meeting. Mister Castro, nice to see you.
Nice to see you all, hello.
And at this time, I would call the Redevelopment Commission regular meeting on April third to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Soon.
Present.
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Tulowinski.
Present.
Commissioner, uh, Culturitis.
Present.
Sorry, Commissioner Gardner, I saw him.
Present.
Everybody's here, oh, and our liaison to the school board, Mister John Castro is in attendance today as well. Nice to see you, Mister Castro.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on, in the public comment section of the Redevelopment Commission? Seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. Who we accept the consent agenda? Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Soon.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Culturitis.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. Uh, there's no old business, nor is there any new business, there's no reports, any announcements to make? No announcements, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment?
So.
And seconded, uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, and for those people that need pictures, you can come up to the front now and we can take your picture.